Each policy statement sets out the investment objective, guidelines, and asset allocation ranges to be followed. Policy statements are subject to review at every committee meeting. Before we review the accounts, I did want to recognize the community members of our investment committee. Kirk Johnson, who is deployed by corporate bank. Thank you. Nick Newkirk, who's an independent investment advisor. And Ken Townsend of Capital Federal are the community members of the investment committee. I also want to praise Janice Selly, who is a trustee of the foundation, who has been invaluable since 2016. And many thanks go to Dr. Scott Mickelson, who has faithfully attended our meetings since 2014 and provided us with lots of important insights to the needs of USD 501. Finally, hats off to Pamela Johnson Betts, even though she didn't give me a bag tonight. She's provided consistent advice and leadership. And finally, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize Barbara Duncan and James Walden from Clayton Wealth Partners, and they are present here this evening. Hold up your hands. There they are. Appreciate you coming. Engaging them was one of the smartest moves that the foundation has ever made. So let's review the accounts. What you see up here is the sports park fund, and it's basically a bar graph depicting the history of the sports park fund from 2005 through October 31 of this year. And you can see there's been pretty consistent growth. The times when there was a dip, 2015 and 2016, were times where there was significant distribution stake. Otherwise, it's been a steady progress. Steady growth in the sports park fund across the community market. 2017 fell back in 2018 to the margin of distribution. Actually, the market was around the $2,000,000. But we're back up on October 31, almost to $2 million debt.
Was 2015 the track? Or was it 2016? Okay, the turn, yeah, I remember.
Was 2015--
It went. It went.
Any questions on that slide? This is a really busy slide, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it. I will cover a couple of things. On the left-hand side is the asset allocation. This fund, which is a sports park fund, invested about 66% in stocks and the remainder in bonds and cash equivalents, my market funds, et cetera. For the year-to-date, the fund has an investment gain of $259,000 plus. And for the season exception, which would go back to the time that Clayton Financial began work with us, it adds an investment gain of over $655,000, just from investments. For those of you who might be interested in returns, year-to-date, it's up almost 16%. Since exception, it's up 6.3%. And the next slide. This is the education fund. And you'd say it's considerably smaller than the sports park fund, but it do. It can go into pretty steady growth. And at the end of October of this year, it's over $326,000. This one is invested more conservatively because it's a smaller fund. And if in the Islander Fund, they're investing pretty close, they have pretty much the same investment policy statement. It says about 50/50 between the 50th and the 10th of the fund's stocks. The fund is, year-to-date, has had investment gains of over $37,000. And since November 30 of 2013, it has had gains of over $70,000. That's the education fund. And finally, in the Islander Fund, which is a relatively new fund compared to the other two, as you know, it was first started late 2017, in 2017, it was $500,000. But by October 31 of this year, it's just below $700,000 in the Islander Fund. This fund is invested pretty much the same way as the education fund, pretty much evenly divided into its common stock. It is, year-to-date, has investment gain of about $81,000. And since exception, which is only May 31 of 2017, only about two and a half years, it has gains of over $76,000. So that's where we are with the three funds that the investment committee is discussing with, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Dr. Mickelson?
I don't have a question, but just a word of thanks to you and to Barbara and James from Clayton Wealth Partners. Mr. Page is chairman of our investment committee and always does an excellent job volunteering his time. And Barbara and James, I always kind of glean their economic perspective and take it home to my family and adjust my portfolio accordingly, based on their perspectives. So they're secretly giving me financial advice without paying for it. But it's been a very well-run under Ms. Johnson-Betts' leadership also. Committee that all made up of all the volunteers, that have best interest of our students at heart and want to see these funds grow to help better students in the programs that we saw earlier this evening with the Scott P program. So it's been a rewarding experience to be on the committee.
Thank you for your work on that committee. Ms. Johnson?
As one of the departed women, I first of all like to thank Ms. Johnson-Betts as well for her leadership and what you all have done for our students and our staff, for the opportunities you provided. And I want to thank you especially from a little break here. But just thank you for being such a dependable, consistent support to all of us and hope that we continue to be within the foundation for this whole work.
I'd like to make one additional comment, and that is, I think we all owe thanks to the late Louise Hummer, who set up the Hundred Sports Park, who contributed significant contributions to the sports park, really a great man first, and he worked well, and it was something she felt very strong about, and all men. All right.
Okay, anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we will take pictures.
We'll learn pictures.
Or pictures.
All right, so Scott can throw it up, looking your pic.
I don't know. We haven't seen it. Call and corrupt this.
They got conscious.
Yeah.
You guys--
Hope so.
I want to give a shout-out to Miss Sam for that. We're so proud of you. We're a weekend dependent, because of the success. She-- Yeah. Other parents. Three. Two. One. I think you're going to do a lot.
Right.
That's right.
That's right. We'll have a board of gamers. Is that what--
I'm going to have a video. Oh, yes. Yeah. You have that in your order. Thank you so much. This is doggies. This is right. You guys need to relax. I'm going to be there. 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 Whatever it is, whatever it is. Yes. December 17 through this point, the last two days. I have-- Four seconds. Four seconds. Yeah. Okay. Three, two, one. Four, three, two, one. Okay. Good. Thank you. 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 I found him. I found him. He was here. It was your moment to shine. Hell, dude. Yeah. I was worried he'd be out there. I was. I thought somebody would-- He took a picture. He was scared. 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 It was on when I walked around. I gave you a touch chat. He gave you a profile. If it doesn't, there's a microphone. I don't have to do that hand. It's good. Must've been dropped a couple times. Tonight? Tonight? Do we need to get a koozie? Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we're bringing it up. Thanks, Ben. So this big switch. Oh, the thing.
Chief Brown, could we send you to get a few bottles of water for us from the--
How many you want?
How many? How many you want? I have to have some. Be three of us at least?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we're waiting for Mr. Woods.
Sir.
And he's back. So--
Like you realize that I can hear you didn't speak. And we're done with the meeting now.
I think he's still here. I'd like to introduce a board member-elect, Lalo Munoz. Is he still here? There he is. Okay. Thanks for that. Next on the agenda is public comments, and we have one. And so would Bonnie Foster come to the podium up here? And Ms. Foster, as you come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes. We ask that your remarks to the board be respectful. If you should have a complaint against a specific employee, we ask that you submit your written complaint to the superintendent. If the complaint isn't against the superintendent, is against the superintendent, please address your written complaint to either me, as board president, or to the clerk of the board. Thank you.
My name is Bonnie Foster. My address is 1830 Southwest Lang Street here in Topeka. And I just want to talk about the bullying policy. I think it's really bad because I've dealt with it this last couple months with my daughter. Being viciously attacked by the same kid six times. She got her finger bruised. She has severe anxiety now. She was terrified to go to school. She missed a lot of school because of it. I had to switch schools, and she's still having panic attacks because of it. And nothing is being done about it. And I've went to the principal every day for a month straight, and nothing ever happened. I didn't came here to fight for it because I've dealt with this with my middle son, too, who attempted to kill himself when he was in the third grade from the same school. So I took him out to homeschool him. And that's what I'm not ready to do with my other, with my daughter because of everything that she has been through. And I think you guys should just relook at your bullying policy because it's getting And so, yeah, I mean, I just want to be heard. I mean, the bullying policy needs to be rechecked.
Okay.
Because it's not severe. Because a kid got into a recess for a week for attacking my daughter so many times.
Okay, thank you very much. You should know that we make no comments, but we've heard you.
Yes, thank you.
Next on the agenda is disposition of business by consent. Ready for a motion?
Mr. President, I move the board to approve the items of business by consent as presented and authorize the board president or superintendent to sign the special project in purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the board.
Do we have a second? Motion and second. Do we have any discussion? We're ready to vote.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, on the agenda next is superintendent's report. Ms. Wallace, are you?
I believe we were going to shift some items around and put the piece on vaping in this spot. Please come forward.
Thank you, Maggie. Good evening, members of the board. Mr. President and Ms. Coe, thank you for inviting and arranging for me to be here. My name is Eric Barton. I'm an attorney at the law firm Wexford Carmel in Kansas City. Our law firm has become heavily involved in representing school districts in Kansas and a number of other states. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. I was hearing myself just fine. I'm here tonight to give you some information about litigation that's occurring by school districts against a company known as Juul. You've heard about Juul e-cigarettes. And just to give you some quick background, then I have a short presentation that I'll kind of try to speed through to give you a overview of the issues and the litigation that's developing. But really, I wanted you to be aware of it. Our law firm about 10 years ago started representing public entities in various kinds of claims or disputes against major product manufacturers. We represent the state of Kansas against tobacco companies relating to disputes about the tobacco monies that are paid to the state every year. And we represent a number of other states. We represent right now Oregon and Kentucky in claims relating to deceptive marketing of products. We also represent a number of cities and counties in claims relating to the opioid epidemic across the country. But what we are now finding ourselves being brought into and are now heavily involved in are claims that are being brought by school districts against Juul alleging that Juul's deceptive and unfair and targeted marketing of youth and underage users has created a true disruption and a nuisance in the schools, that schools are starting to have to expend resources and may continue to have to do so in the future in order to deal with the addiction crisis that is emerging. And the statistics are pretty alarming about that addiction crisis. So there really is a public health, we believe, public health emergency that is emerging among teenage users of e-cigarettes. And schools are really on the front lines of it. And a number of schools, including in Kansas, so far, Olathe, Blue Valley, Shawnee Mission, De Soto, Linsburg, and Goddard, all have filed lawsuits now against Juul. We represent all of those districts. And I can tell you that Manhattan is about to vote, we believe, to join. And Lawrence is considering it and other Wichita schools. So there's, and there are a lot of school districts in other states we're representing as well. So it's an emerging thing. I'm here to talk about it quickly and most importantly, give you a chance to ask any questions or at least start a conversation should you want to have it further. So very quickly, just this is the background on the problem. Teenage cigarette use plummeted over 40 years from a once a high of about 29% of high school students in 1976 smoked cigarettes. And that number got down to as low as 3.6% of traditional cigarettes as of this year. But what has now happened is that while that was a public health success and was aided by litigation by states against the tobacco companies saying, "You are unfairly targeting youth and you have to stop doing that," and they did, that helped considerably. But what has now happened is Juul has completely reversed those numbers when it comes to nicotine addiction. So as of 2019, the most current data we have, now 27.5% of high school students are reported using e-cigarettes. So we are about, we are about up to 1976 levels when it comes to nicotine use. And that has really happened since 2015. Those statistics suggest an 1,800% increase from 2011, and that's when the first e-cigarettes really started to be on the market. But Juul, which was, came on the market in 2015, has completely changed the game with their, with their approach. So the FDA has recognized this is an epidemic. This is an addiction crisis. I'm going to explain quickly why it is so. The nicotine use in e-cigarettes and in vaping is fundamentally different than in traditional cigarettes and is much more dangerous. This is just, Kevin Burns, a former CEO of Juul, had to step down a few months ago. They've obviously gotten a lot of pressure now. But he said, "We are partly responsible for the use. We have 80% of the market. How can we not do it?" So there's really three ways that Juul did this, that through the device that they invented, most importantly, the nicotine, that they changed the delivery of it chemically, and then their marketing. The device, as you may be aware, it is sleek, it is slim, it's easy to conceal, it looks like, the pods look like USB devices or hard drives. So they blend right into an academic environment into backpacks. The nicotine in a Juul pod, in one Juul pod, is equivalent to the nicotine in two packs of traditional cigarettes. The problem with that is that Juul pods, unlike smoking a traditional cigarette where you have, it burns out, you have to light another one, and of course, with traditional cigarettes now and indoor smoking laws, you can't just smoke anywhere. With Juul pods, you can reload, recharge, you can, you can smoke those as much as you possibly can get away with. And in the academic environment, kids are getting away with it a lot because it's easy to conceal and it's easy to do very discreetly. The nicotine salts in Juul are, they're patented and they, they did a lot of studying to try to perfect this. The delivery of nicotine by Juul is much more efficient to the bloodstream than through a traditional cigarette. And as a result, it is much more potent and through, and so, and it's also less harsh. And kids are unaware of this. They don't know how much more addictive a smoking and consuming nicotine through Juul is than traditional cigarettes, but they're getting extremely hooked. Juul also marketed to youth through, you know, their flavors. They have a lot of flavored products like creme brulee and mango and things that were, have been deemed to be youth oriented. Statistics are showing the sweet candy fruit flavors are far and away the most popular among high school students. Juul has known this. They studied very carefully how to market to youth and they've done it effectively. Go ahead. The marketing of Juul, which is part of the case against Juul, they set out very deliberately to mark, to target the youngest audience they thought they could get away with. The problem is you can't market to 18 and 9-year-olds, 19-year-olds without marketing to 15 and 16-year-olds. You just can't do it. They all consume the same media. And Juul made no efforts to try to avoid marketing to a young teenage audience. In fact, the opposite was true. In their early marketing, they created launch parties. They did not control those well for age. They marketed them on social media to, to young people and they became very fashionable among high school kids. They used social media very effectively. There's no crime in using social media effectively, but again, they marketed to a youth-oriented market. They marketed in ways that the traditional tobacco companies are banned from doing. But they exposed the fact that the bans that were put in place for the traditional tobacco companies were not put in place for e-cigarette companies. And so they, they exploited that. The, Robert Jackler is a professor at Stanford who studied the rise in e-cigarettes more than probably any other health professional so far. And he said it, Juul, what they did differently is exploited social media where American middle school and high school kids live. That was their innovation. His, in his foundation, Stanford Research into Tobacco Advertising, has concluded that Juul's marketing was patently youth-oriented and that is what tobacco companies are precluded from doing, that cannot engage in youth-oriented marketing. So there are a lot of problems with teen nicotine use, mainly the nicotine addiction, which leads to behavioral mental health problems, both immediate and long-term. And the long-term effects are still very unknown. And, and that's a frightening thing right now, I think, for a lot of, a lot of parents. Juul admits this. When asked about long-term risks, he, and Juul admits, "We don't really know. We haven't done long-term studies. So we don't really know what the long-term risks are of our products." And so what that frankly does is it turns today's youth into the lab rats for finding out just how, how bad long-term e-cigarette and nicotine consumption through this, this mode of delivery will be. There are studies that are coming out that are linking e-cigarette smoke to significant long-term health problems, but it's early. The, the use in, in Juul and e-cigarettes is still new enough. It's really exploded over the last four years. So schools are on the front line of this problem. They're seeing it every day. Of course, kids are doing their best, I think, or not. Principals and people on the front lines in the schools would have a better idea of this, but they're obviously using bathrooms and sweatshirts and any, any ways they can to try to conceal what they're doing because they know they're not supposed to be doing it. But what I think educators are starting to realize as we're talking to schools really around the state, around the country, is that this is not as much of a discipline problem, which is how it felt early on, as it is a health problem. Because these kids are actually severely addicted. And so it is, it's becoming perceived more and more as a health crisis to try to help solve as much as a discipline issue. So the impact that Juul is having on schools is a huge distraction element because of both the disciplinary issues and just kids. Kids are so addicted, they are having a difficult time. The seriously addicted kids, and there are those in every school, they have a very hard time focusing a class. They, their brain is telling them what they want is their next hit. And that's, that's a major distraction for them and therefore for teachers and kids around them. This is, it is, and not in all schools equally, but in, in more and more schools, this is consuming resources, both with policing, with, with policing and punishment and with health, health counselors. This is either having or will have, we believe, an economic impact on schools. And that's part of what this litigation is about. This litigation will not solve the e-cigarette vaping problem. This is not a magic bullet. But what we believe and what the premise of this litigation is, is that harder taxpayer dollars should not really be the source of trying to remedy the nuisance, the distraction, and the problems that schools are now confronting because of the Juul addiction crisis. The remedies, the plan to abate and try to reduce those problems of distraction and high school addiction to this, this product, the funds necessary to put in place those, those resources, the counseling, the education, those funds should come from Juul because they have profited from this and they caused it. They deliberately set out to, to grow a youth teenage market. There's an alarming statistic that I just read. To put this into perspective, Harvard Medical School just did a study of thousands of high school kids. And they found that high school kids who try traditional cigarettes, 17% continue. So a little less than one in five if they try it, they'll try it again. With Juul, that's 58%. So that's, there are reasons why that's true. There are reasons in the nicotine and in the delivery of the product. And so we believe that even schools who haven't yet found this to be a major distraction, they may be aware of it, but it hasn't yet been a major distraction. We believe it probably will become that before it's over. So a number of schools are fighting back. This is just a list of, of school districts that have retained us. The ones in red are all in Kansas. But other states, that's just a partial list. We've been retained by school districts now in Florida and in Pennsylvania as well as these. And so the litigation is, is developing rapidly and taking shape in the federal courts. And so, go ahead. The, the legal theory quickly is a public nuisance theory which has been used successfully so far in the opioid litigation. And that is where public entities are harmed by private companies that have marketed their product in illegal ways. They have to pay some consequences. They have to pay some, some damages for creating that crisis. And so very simply, we would be seeking on behalf of this school district, as we are with our other clients, past and future expenses for dealing with the problem in juncture relief, which would be the courts ordering Juul to stop doing certain things in relation to how they market to young people. And then seeking also punitive damages to deter Juul from this same kind of conduct in the future. We're representing these districts with several other law firms who, who have similar histories and we work with on, on other kinds of cases. And, and want to say that just kind of concludes the presentation with what we're doing. So I apologize, it was a little longer. I know you have a big agenda tonight, but I did want you to be aware of this. Yeah, I guess this is an important slide. So we are representing all of the school districts on what's called a contingency basis. That means we do not, we are not paid out of any appropriations from the school districts. If, if we receive any attorney's fees, it will only be out of any recovery that we achieve in the case. We take the risk on that. If it turns out we're wrong and Juul wins, then we lose, but the school district is not out any money. And that includes for the expenses of the litigation as well, for expert witnesses and all of those things. So those are, those are costs that we advance and we take the risk on. And so that's, that's what the litigation is about. What I'll leave you with, because you're just learning about this and most, most districts and boards do like to think about things that are important like this, but we, we have provided or will provide, Ms. Coe, with some materials that you can review, a resolution that districts that have decided to join the litigation have enacted, which kind of lays out the rationale for joining, and a representation agreement. But this is obviously no obligation. It's just a choice of whether you want to join our other clients in pursuing this. So really appreciate the time and be happy to answer any questions or come back.
Any questions? Dr. Mickelson?
Just one before anybody has comments, just in the interest of full disclosure. Eric is my wife's little brother, so I'm claiming this family, so.
But I didn't, I didn't come here first. We've been to so many other districts, Scott.
One question, and Ms. Coe, I prefer to throw if I should even participate in this discussion, she issued me that this was not a conflict. The question I have is what kind of commitment from the district would be necessary in the interest of time and energy that would, might detract us from our other obligations for educating our kids?
It's a good question and, and every district wants to know that, which is, it's a good question to ask. The, the time commitment from the district is, is, we believe, minimal. And this is why. The, the problem is actually fairly well-defined, or I should say, it, the, the information that schools have about how they are dealing with Juul is relatively easy to collect. It's a, it's a, I should say, it's a focused problem. And we, the way this litigation works and progresses, we do not need significant involvement or investment. We, we believe that with, with kind of one contact person from the district who can gather the relevant information from each high school and middle school, middle school on their information, some schools aren't even tracking it yet, which is also understandable. But, but the information that we need to gather over the course of the litigation, we believe is actually relatively minimal and the time investment is minimal. That's, that's just how we, how we see it. We've, in our opioid litigation, I can just try to put some numbers on it. In the opioid litigation so far, we're representing cities and counties relating to the opioid addiction crisis, which is much more widespread in terms of its impact. And so far, we, we probably have spent with most of our city or county clients, we're a year and a half into the litigation and with most of them, we have needed about a total of 20 to 40 man-hours, person-hours from the county over that period of time, if that puts it into perspective. And that's usually from one or two people who kind of do the legwork. And, and we would expect it to probably be less than that considerably for each school district, at least in the first year, year and a half.
Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the presentation. One very quick question, as I've been watching this develop across the country, a number of municipalities are also getting involved in this very litigation. Are you representing any of, of any of our cities and counties?
In Juul litigation, no.
Okay.
You know, we, so, so we have some individual users, some, some, you know, young addicted individuals who are clients with their own claims. We have some of those, but predominantly our clients are school districts and only those, so.
Very good. Thank you. Without further questions, we will take it under advisement. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay. Mr. Allen, we're going to make another little switch. And we will have the graduation and enrollment presentation first.
Just want to update you tonight. I'm sure you've heard in some of the media outlets that we, we've had some significant changes in our graduation rates. Again, I'm Aaron Kip. I'm the director of demographic assessment. If we look at a 10-year overview, you can see that a pretty steady increase all the way back from 2010 to our most recent 81.3 district graduation rate. So very positive trends in that regard. Now, this graph, I always like to include certain demographic variables like gender and race and subgroups. This is pretty common throughout. Actually, there's been empirical, empirical studies that show females out-graduate males every single state in the United States. So this is not uncommon. My wife says that women are smarter naturally, so this makes sense. As we shift to racial categories, these are our big three racial categories in our district, black, Hispanic, and white. Last year, we completely closed the racial gap across those three categories in terms of graduation rate. This year, there was a slight dip, but within a margin of error, I think they're pretty much remaining to be in the closed area, you know, given that margin of error. So great progress in terms of maintaining that racial gap closure. This is one of my favorite slides. It illustrates some of our subgroups. The free lunch is typically represented by those kids that are impoverished, that can only afford free lunch, not just reduced, we're talking free, the most at-risk population. They had their highest graduation rate in the past five years at 78.8. Our special ed, the center column there, also had their highest graduation rate in the last five years. And our English language learner population also had their highest graduation rate in the last five years. Now, if we look at specific schools, Topeka High has a record-high graduation rate of 83.5, right?
Essentially 4.5.
That's a whole nother conversation, yeah. So, yeah, and Ms. Morrissey has comments to that. We'll set another meeting, I think. As we go to Topeka West, 95% is where they were at last year. Once again, they've maintained that 95%. If you can go back one more. Which is an interesting perspective. It's one of the highest graduation rates in all of Shawnee County. And, you know, this conversation 10 years ago, we would never be speaking of these kind of gains. So having been here back in 2010, I'm really proud of our district and the work that the principals and the teachers have done in this regard. Highland Park had a huge increase the previous year at 86.9. They have since then leveled off to just still above 80, almost 81%. Hope Street, our alternative critical recovery site, you can definitely see it So you're going to see those ups and downs, kind of peaks and valleys in that regard.
How, how, how does this work, Aaron, or Mr. Kip? So oftentimes, we are, we are, you know, students are assigned to Cap City, get some intensive services, make their way back to their home school, graduate, walk with their home school. How do we count graduates?
Those kids would actually be counted in the traditional high school.
Home school, right, so.
Those, those kids that weren't successfully reintegrated back into their home school are remaining at Cap City.
So this is really a totally distinct population, probably merits some kind of giant asterisk off to the side to make people understand exactly what we're, you wouldn't be comparing apples to apples.
Correct, correct. And oftentimes, keep in mind, the state only recognizes a four-year graduation rate now. Some of these kids, particularly at Cap City, can go to school till they're 21.
Yeah.
And sometimes it does legitimately take them five, six years to, to get all the credits that their peers might achieve. And just as a little summary, we did graduate 794 students in this 2019 cohort for four year. The racial gap does remain to be nearly closed, and these record graduation rates for ELL, special ed, and free students. Finally, some of the more specific, African and American, African-American and white students have the highest graduation rates in nine years. And in particular, at Topeka West, this is really unheard of, they had 100% graduation rate for their African-American kids, and 100% graduation rate for their ELL students. And again, I'm reiterating, the ELL students, the record free lunch and special ed. So that's the quick overview. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Questions? Mr. Woods?
So, how much, Mr. Kip, this is probably a much bigger question than you can answer right now, and will probably deserve a lot longer time to take a look at some of these numbers, but how much can we attribute of the high graduation rates, which we are all incredibly proud of, to the change that the state made in terms of what's required for credits versus how much can we attribute to our efforts to make sure our students, who may have fallen through the cracks, but for, you know, renewed focus and attention to detail by our educators, make sure they recover the credits that they need in time to still be counted in the narrow four-year window the state allows? So that's kind of a two-part question, but.
I think I could speak mainly to our efforts internally, in terms of data and building relationships. I know it's been reported in the media that we, we do utilize these data consults every 30 days with every single school. One of the primary focuses of the high school data consult is to evaluate the individual plan for every single senior or junior. Where do they stand? Have they taken the FAFSA? They taking the ACT? What's their post-secondary goals? And so doing this at every 30-day intervals keeps, helps keep these kids on track. Our principals may have more to add to that in terms of internal strategies that they do. I also think the mentorship program has created almost kind of a sense of hope. You know, you have some first-generation kids that may be going off to college, they don't know how to navigate some of these things, like the FAFSA or applying for scholarships. And so we've kind of shifted our internal resources to be kind of a, I would say, kind of a guide in helping these kids get to that path, not just getting their diploma. What, what do you got going on afterwards? Are you going to go to a two-year school? Are you going to military? There's an option for every single one of our kids, and we're trying to find that and match that up.
I think that answers my question. I still would love to see at some point, I guess, the, I know that we also have made adjustments because the state changed the, you know, number of credits that were required. And we have very nimbly adjusted, and we are doing everything that you just mentioned to prevent our students fall through the cracks. I'd like to see a comparison. Obviously, you don't have that tonight, but.
Sure, I can follow up with you.
Dr. Mickelson?
Just we, Mr. Gallin, you should just flip through the slides slowly. I've got some notes, and I'm just looking at the high school by school graduation rates. So T, what's Topeka High is what?
84.8.
Hey, put 84. something really low.
84.5.
Okay, the next one. It's 95 Topeka West, and Highland Park was 80.8. When I look at all those numbers, they're all, Highland Park is essentially at the average, and the other two, which are bigger schools, are north of the average, and so, and Cap City's got such a small number. Hope Street has 81.7, so they're at the norm, they're at the average. It seems like our average should be higher. If you, if you take an average of those five schools, I mean, I don't know the, I mean, we're looking at different school sizes, I understand, but.
Yeah.
Last has 225 graduates.
It is, the cohort formula, I, I see where you're going with this. It's not really a linear, linear relationship between schools. So like Topeka High, for example, may have, it counts into effect, affect dropout rates. And so that comes into play for that particular formula. So we can't really average them all together to get us pure district number. I mean, I could sit down and show you the mathematics.
It's a numbers guy, and I like to.
Yeah, I know, me too. I love it, but.
And then I would venture to guess that if we went back prior to 2010, I mean, some of your data is the last nine years, or it's the best in nine years, I bet it's the best in 20-9 years, maybe, I mean, you know, so.
Well, if you go back too far, there was the issue of states calculating graduation rates differently. And so finally, the council of governors all got together and said, hey, we need to start doing this calculation the same, so that graduate means the same thing here in Kansas as it does if they move to Nebraska. So I purposely left off some of that prior calculation methods.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Dr. McCarty?
Thank you for presenting tonight, and I really appreciate the diving into the data. It's really helpful to the board when we can look a little more closely, and I appreciate, you know, I'm very interested in the gender differences, so I'm glad we are continuing to keep an eye on that, even though it may be a national trend, we know it's not particular to our district, it's still worrisome. And questions that all, all of us in education need to be asking about, what, what else can we be doing to help our young men achieve at the same rate that our young women are? So the increases are spectacular. We could not be more pleased as a board to see, see us bearing the fruit of, of the changes we've made. It's always difficult analyzing data because it's multifactorial. And while there are things that we have been doing internally as a district, there's also been things happening at the state level and at the national level as well. It's really interesting to, to, and I hope everyone kind of notices, how we were stuck for several years, if you go back on those, on those rates. So really, not a lot of movement happening. Those were the very years when school funding was, was really cut. And we had the, the Great Recession going on, so we had higher poverty happening among our students, greater stress, we moved families. And so happily, we, we also saw at that time, changes we were making in the district, including recreating a curriculum department and making changes that we knew we would not really see the results of for probably five, five years at least. And, and so it's just very heartening to me as a board member, particularly as an outgoing board member, to say, wow, we are on the right trend, and the changes that we have put in place, and the, the recent innovations that Dr. Anderson have brought have been making a difference. And that also includes improvements in, in our discipline, lowering, we've paid really pushed for looking hard at our suspension and expulsion rates. We have.
I can give you two more examples.
Yes, I would love to hear more.
Uh, one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, well, you kind of alluded to removing the financial barriers.
Yeah.
Particularly around the ACT. The board did approve for a, a, a district participation in ACT where we would foot the bill for these kids.
Yeah.
And to have it during school, that was kind of a barrier to have it on the weekends, where, you know, they got jobs or transportation issues, but to have it embedded in a school day, I think removed a barrier for a lot of kids. The second one would be the board's initiative towards supporting more bus passes and getting kids to school, I think.
So attendance.
Our attendance rates have jumped up. I, I don't know how strong of a corollary it is to these results, but I guarantee it's a, it's a component.
And then we look at all the mental health services that we're providing too, and the, the attention to trauma-informed care. We have innovations like our Topeka High principal's brought into her school with the, the, yeah, yeah. So just so much going on that all seems to be pointing in the right direction, and the importance of supporting the things that work, right? Making sure that we analyze those programs and are able to say, Avid would be another one I would throw in there. Avid is something that, even though it seems like it only targets a few students, can often have a school-wide effect. So thank you for presenting the data, and just congratulations to everybody in our district for all that you have been doing, all the teachers in the classrooms, student by student making that happen.
Ms. Morrissey?
I want to share another. We talked about the standards-based grading, but what we noticed as a staff, and it showed up a little bit, we started with the standards-based key component of this, we wanted to grade to show a hand in the semester looking here. So we wanted kids to have an opportunity to learn at pace, and we wanted to go back and redo standards.
With the standards-based grading, we really focused on an opportunity for kids to learn at their pace, so they can do standards over and over until they can prove they know it. We've also extended even into second semester with year-long classes, so teachers are really working with students throughout that time. So even if they aren't doing well second, they can still recover first. There's been a lot of opportunity, but what we realized, and these are just numbers I want to share because it's a long evening, but when we broke it down, our sped and our ELL, and then free kids showed this kind of growth in the last three years, so just since we started those initiatives. Our sped population three years ago was 62.1%. Steadily, we have raised now to 84.9. Our ELL population started at 61.8, they're now at 88.1.
So that's graduation, right?
Yes. And our free three years ago was 65.6, and it's now 82. So what we've seen is by giving opportunity and time to kids who have a lot of barriers, we've seen huge growth in those areas as well. We have some we know we still need to work. African-American population especially, males is lower, but we're still about 10% higher in the last five years of the decade than in the first five. But I really feel like the two initiatives, they're, they're similar for different reasons. Restorative practices and working with kids through the social, emotional, along with the standards-based grading, has really helped us see very incremental and steady and huge growth, and I'm very proud of staff because it's been a tough shift. And we're not there yet. We're still in the early stages of really making those moves throughout every department, so. Thanks.
Congratulations.
Yeah, very good.
That's another quick statement I would make too, is that I would bet, Mrs. Wallace might be able to answer this too, is wouldn't you think that we're also seeing the effects of kids who had full-day kindergarten hitting, hitting high school years, right? Would, would the timing work out on that? Early childhood gains?
Probably, we had all-day kindergarten, probably the first graduates would have been about three to five years ago.
Our kids.
Our kids aged so about five years ago.
Yeah.
So as you look back over the last five years.
And now think of how they're getting early childhood, pre-K, so.
Yeah, think what would happen in universal pre-K.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Kip? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the technology update. Mr. Gallin?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm here this evening to talk about the technology initiatives that we have, and I'll try to make our presentation brief, but I do want to hit some very good points in here. With me tonight, we have Lindsay Tickling-Bates. She's a teacher at Chatham School at W., thank you. We have Dr. Arian Gray, he's the principal of Randolph Elementary, and the recently promoted director of instruction, as I understand.
It was on a consent agenda that next year he will be the director of instructional services. Congratulations.
Congratulations. From our IT team, we have Dick Hanson, our technical services manager. We have Mark Moore, our IT manager for applications. Regina couldn't join us tonight. Regina McBoiler is our IT manager of networking. We have Travis Terrell, our IT manager for technical support. With us tonight, we also have David Grossman and Memo.
Ernch.
Okay, no, sorry.
Memo Ernch.
Memo is the account executive from Tyler Technologies, and David Grossman is the director of product development, I believe. And they'll be taking questions later tonight. Let's see, we've asked everybody to kind of pitch in with us and give us their different perspectives, so we'll be sharing that with you. This is a brief look at what we see as our mission as the technology team. We want students to engage with modern technologies, to prepare themselves for college and careers, and to inspire their personal vision of success. We did a brief needs assessment, looking over all the things that can compete for our attention in IT, and obviously, those engaging learning opportunities are our priority. But we also have to take into consideration the mandates that we get from the federal and state regulations. Chief among those mandates is the ability to protect our students from cybersecurity threats, and also, we have to look at the fiscal responsibility to make sure that the impact of our initiatives doesn't impact the school district too much. This is our device replacement cycle at a glance. As you can see, we've had some, some generous opportunities in the past with grants and with the bond initiative, to be able to provide our students with lots of instructional resources for them to explore with technology. What this is looking at is now that those grants and bond opportunities are getting a little more scarce, this is looking at what we would need to have for capital outlay to be able to support those in, in a reasonable cycle life for each of those devices. If you put those numbers together in their cycle times versus how old the devices are right now, that blue line shows how much our capital outlay would have to vary from year to year, just to be able to keep up with the devices that we have currently deployed. The red line shows how we could kind of smooth that out if we take a different approach, and we're recommending that we do capital leases on devices over their useful life so that we can kind of flatten out the capital outlay needs to support the technology for Here's a list of the projects that are currently underway for this year. We've, we've got a lot going on. Last year, you may recall that we approved, that the board approved an E-Rate project that we, that we did with funds from the E-Rate program to purchase uninterruptible power supplies for all of our wiring circuits. The intent of this was to keep, to keep our network up in the buildings in the event of power outages, and to protect the equipment that it serves. We also, last year, purchased Lightspeed, and this year, we've been implementing Lightspeed content filtering, and we are working towards implementing a classroom monitoring solution that they also offer. This year, Adobe changed its licensing structure, and as a result of that licensing structure change, we are experiencing, we're using cloud-based enterprise. We also, last year, purchased Lightspeed, and this year, we've been implementing Lightspeed content filtering. And we are working towards implementing a classroom monitoring solution that they also offer. This year, Adobe changed its licensing structure, and as a result of that licensing structure change, we are experiencing, we're using cloud-based enterprise model now. And so that means that instead of the software being installed on the computers where the students can interact with it directly, they're using cloud-based accounts. And we're also noticing that because we're using cloud-based stuff, our content filtering can sometimes, we sometimes have interactions that can create a challenge for us. So we're working through that. We have additional infrastructure repairs listed up there in case of fiber optic repairs and some additional security features up there as well that we're working with. But our biggest initiative this year has been the transition from PowerSchool to Tyler SIS. Student information system transitions are always a challenge because they impact stakeholders from across the board. Every parent's impacted, every kid's impacted, every teacher's impacted, all of us are impacted from the student information change. I've been through three of them, and some of the things that we see up on our challenges list here are typical of what we might see in student information change. The first issue that we ran into was some errors that we saw in Tyler, I'm sorry, in PowerSchool. And bringing that data over from PowerSchool to Tyler required us to clean up a lot of errors that were in the system. Some of them came over with the current students in preparation for online registration, but we worked through that. We worked with the Tyler team as well as to work with our schools to go back and validate the data and make sure we had it correct. We also had a, Tyler also had a change in their version. They adopted a new version of their Tyler 360 presentation, and that's on the student, teacher, and parent side. And so that change kind of coincided with our release, and that presented some initial challenges for us that we did work through. Tyler assisted by working through some of the earlier things that we noticed in software. We had some challenges during online registration where parents had the ability to edit the student data that we had in there. And we had safeguards in place to be able to catch that, but unfortunately, we didn't catch some of them. And as a result, we did have some inaccurate data collected during the online registration that fed over into other, working on the next item here, that fed over into other integrations with other software. Our team and the secretaries for the schools, we worked together to try to get those inaccuracies corrected, and then we also went back through it and corrected them in our integrations. With our integrations, we were mostly done. There are a few that Tyler are working on for us, and then there are a few that our internal team is also working on. We did have a frequent complaint about disappearing grades and attendance and assignments. We did provide that information to Tyler, but yet, but we had not been able to determine the cause. Each of the ones where we had specific information for, we were able to explain that the grades didn't actually disappear, and we were able to work with the teachers and the others to kind of arrive at what did happen there. But as of yet, that's an item I'm still keeping out there until we can figure out exactly what happened for everybody. We do have some, we did have some incomplete schedules to start the year off with. We've worked through that with the schools. We had some difficulties with the first quarter grades, getting those posted correctly, largely a training issue. Since we did get through the first quarter and the grades did go out successfully, we expect the second quarter to go most more smoothly. We did have some issues with standards-based dual-language report card formats. Tyler has implemented several of our recommendations, and I think we're on a better path for that as well. One of the key issues was part-time students. We had some attendance calculation issues, and we implemented a new calculation method for second quarter that did resolve those part-time student issues. About a month ago, we started a survey conducted by teaching and learning of teachers, and we actually found that the teachers, the teachers who responded to the survey responded pretty comfortably to assignments and grades, attendance, and discipline referrals, all of which were the modules that we provided their training on at the beginning of the year. They each had three training modules. Here's a timeline of our professional development opportunities that we provided. Not only do we provide traditional professional development opportunities at the end of the school year, but also at the beginning of the school year. But the workshops that we did at the beginning of the school year involved teachers actually doing those tasks and demonstrating that they had the mastery either in the training environment or in the live environment. We also provided after-school opportunities for small group and one-on-one training in our IT. And Tyler also provided some trainers that came out in the first couple of weeks of school and went to each school individually and provided additional support based upon the needs of that building. Going forward, because we do see from some of the challenges that we saw on the previous screen, we will also be providing small group training available at late start Fridays and late nights at Bishop. Those are my perspectives on Tyler, but we'd like to share the perspectives of others. So I'm going to invite the four of you to come join me up here and do it. We're going to begin with Lindsay, if you don't mind. She's going to share with us a perspective as a teacher.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lindsay Tipling-Bates, and I am an eighth-grade language arts teacher at Chase Middle School. I've been teaching at Chase for seven years, and I've been a teacher for a total of 15 years. I'm here this evening to speak to you about the rollout of the Tyler SIS program in Topeka 501. From my perspective, there have been numerous advantages that Tyler SIS has brought to us as a program. However, the program has had a few issues with this first semester that has concerned some teachers and staff. I hear both positives and negatives from my fellow teachers when speaking of the program. I consider myself to be fairly technologically savvy, and I can adapt to new software easily. I've not had very many problems when working with Tyler SIS, but I have found numerous benefits to the program. The benefits that really stand out to me are as follows. First, it is much easier to contact parents. The system has a built-in way to send emails and notifications to parents en masse about student grades or behavior. Additionally, it automatically makes a log of that parent contact. I've found this to be a huge time saver. Second, the format for taking attendance is easy to understand, and there's an app for Tyler SIS that allows teachers to take attendance from their phones or from tablets, which is very beneficial. Finally, it's much easier to log behavior concerns in Tyler SIS. A teacher can add behavior entry for multiple students if the same behavior is seen at the same time. This is another time saver. Time savers like this within the system allow teachers more time for educating and engaging students in learning. I also asked my students for their perspectives on Tyler SIS this week. First and foremost, they like the user interface. They found it colorful and engaging. I see them using it much more often than I saw them using PowerSchool's student portal. Next, they enjoy the missing assignments feature. This is beneficial to both students and parents. It pulls missing assignments that have been flagged into one location that's easy to access. Finally, students said that they were noticing that they're seeing different types of information, such as fees due, upcoming assignments, and schedule changes. My principal also offered me a perspective on the program. She said that Tyler SIS has much more capacity on the classic group side to run reports, and that it's much easier to look at student grades and missing assignments. She also told me that it's very easy for administration to view teacher assignments and grade categories. Another aspect that the admin team at my school's found beneficial is that students' families are linked together, which allows the office to better address parents and families about student progress. As with any new technology, there are always a few adjustments to be made by those using the technology. In the seven years that I've worked for the district, I've seen an addition of numerous types of technology. Change can be a little bit overwhelming sometimes, and many of the negatives or concerns I've heard from teachers in my building have not really been problems with the system, but are problems with understanding how to use the system. I think that in order for teachers and staff to feel more confident in using Tyler SIS, a little bit more training in the program would be beneficial. The most common complaint I've heard is that teachers are concerned if GPAs or grades are being correctly calculated. During the first part of the school year, I discovered that my grades were not being correctly calculated. But after I looked into the matter, I discovered that the error was my own. I hadn't set the weights for my courses correctly. After adjusting that aspect, my grades are accurate. This is just one example that demonstrates how training could be helpful for some. Many of the concerns that my fellow teachers have expressed are actually just tasks that they don't know how to do yet. The teachers in my building have also been comparing Tyler SIS to PowerSchool. In my opinion, this is not a fair comparison. PowerSchool was used by the district for years. By the end of our cycle with it, all of the bugs had been worked out, everyone was fully trained. In year one of any new technology, one would expect an adjustment period. I believe that Tyler SIS has many advantages from teacher, student, and administrative perspectives, but I also think that a little more training on Tyler SIS will eliminate the concerns that some staff are currently experiencing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lindsay. Dr. Gray.
Okay, thank you, Lindsay. As a school administrator who uses Tyler SIS on a daily basis, my experience with Tyler has been quite positive. Number one, because it offers an amazing wealth of information at your fingertips, which are used at data consults. Also, there are customer reports that I utilize a lot for attendance, to monitor attendance, things such as grades. So those customer reports, again, has been very helpful for me as well. And then lastly, as Lindsay stated, the homeschool communication. There's an ability in Tyler SIS to be able to email parents, mass email parents. You can email parents, and you can be able to capture it within the Tyler system, and that has been very helpful for me as a school administrator. So, again, it has been positive. There have been a few glitches. With those glitches, I've been able to reach out to Mr. Gallin, and he's been able to address those, so, thank you.
Good evening. I want to ask Mr. Kip to step up here with me because we work collaboratively with Tyler SIS and especially with, as its integration with Tyler Pulse, as we look at, as mentioned earlier, data consults and using that data. Tyler SIS is a reliable system. As with any system like that, the data is only as accurate as it is clean within the initial system. So we've been working through that to make sure the data inside Tyler SIS is clean and accurate so that we can make those decisions. A couple of aspects about Tyler that really stand out is the ease of access for customer reports as far as pulling data in from a data grid to select specific criteria. This can be done at our level, at the principal level, at the teacher level, in order to create reports about the group of students that we're working with. We're also able to disaggregate data in a way that collaborates our two departments very tightly. I rely on Mr. Kip and his background with data and his mathematics, the deal with the analytics. We get together, we talk, and then we start to talk about how can we implement this from an instructional standpoint. And so truly using the data to impact instruction, that it requires the two departments to come together, we meet daily every week to talk about, here's what I think, here's what I noticed, what's the impact? We go to data consults together in order to work on that. All that is driven by the data that's inside Tyler SIS. We're able to ensure consistency as we look at grading practices or assignments within a particular course so that we can check very quickly to make sure that everyone is following the curriculum design maps that have been put out there, that we're on pace to complete everything we need to by the end of the year. It's a matter of truly a collaborative piece between the demographics and assessment department as well as teaching and learning as we go out and truly use data to impact and change instruction.
Yeah, I'll just add that, like Dr. Mack mentioned, that the quality of data is significantly different with Tyler SIS than it is with PowerSchool in a positive way. I love having the ability for people in the field to manipulate their own data, build their own reports. They don't have to rely on us or go through some bureaucratic channel to get what they need out of the data. In terms of state reporting, Tyler, the company's been wonderfully, I mean, this is their first venture into a large district in Kansas. The rules in Kansas as far as state reporting are extremely complex. Tyler has been very supportive personally for me, very responsive. I usually hear an email or something in the same day, so it's really, it's great. The tech support is wonderful. Finally, Tyler SIS talks to our data warehouse, Tyler Pulse. And not only can we build these reports to help guide instruction, but we can build reports to detect dirty data, dates not matching up. So it's, I think, we're going to have a lot healthier data going forward, just from a systems point of view, and there's a lot more customizability with the Tyler SIS program than there was with PowerSchool.
Thank you, everyone. All right, now that we've talked about Tyler and our current projects, let's take a look at some of our upcoming project needs. We have a rather outdated HR and finance system that does limit our ability to do some of the things that we've been wanting to do. Now, Dr. Anderson and I have talked about experiences in other locations that are paperless from an HR perspective, and so we need to start looking at some other alternatives to what we have currently. I've been also working very closely with the special education department, who are currently looking at a replacement for their WebKids software. Again, same basic situation. They're working with something that's out of date and clunky, and those are their words. And they're looking for something more user-friendly. And then another project that we're looking at coming up is adapting to some of our security needs. We are in the midst of a cybersecurity audit, and we're going to take some of those recommendations and make sure that we shore up our defenses. I'm not sure how many of us are aware of it, but school districts have come under attack recently at a much larger pace than they had previously. And so we want to make sure that we learn from their opportunities so that they don't learn from ours. At this point, I'd also like to take the time to introduce our strategic planning committee for technology. These are the folks who will be reviewing some device opportunities for us and helping us kind of firm up, firm up what we are able to offer our teachers and students in the way of technology going forward. Are there any questions for us?
Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Gallin, for this presentation. This is, this is excellent. This is probably one of the most thorough yet still fit within 13 slides presentations that we've ever had on technology. Couple of quick questions. One, kind of from my own information, just so I understand. There was a slide, it was slide eight, it was the survey that you did that had the referrals. What referrals are we talking?
It was a discipline referral.
Oh, so there's DR, okay.
So basically, we presented three modules to the teachers with their training. One was centered around attendance and getting to know the system, being able to pull information out of it. One was centered around assignments and grades, and the other was centered around discipline referrals and contact log entries. And like I said, when the teaching and learning staff put together a survey, we asked for those pieces that we trained them on earlier in the year to see where they stand comfort-wise on this, and this is what we're looking at. The blue, just so that everybody's clear, the blue is that they're comfortable with it in some shape, form, or fashion.
Which is, which is great. I mean, that's a, that's where we want to be. My question, I guess, would be on the, for referrals, that's a quarter of the folks who are not comfortable in using it. And I'm kind of curious, I don't understand, I guess, what are the distinctions in terms of making a discipline referral, having it saved and tracked in the system from attendance or assignments and grades? It seems like there must be something inherent.
There's actually a little bit more to the data than that. First of all, with the assignments, grades, and attendance, we focused the data on the teachers themselves, since any staff member can put in a referral.
Okay.
We opened up the referral question, and we took data from everyone because, you know, a janitor could get in the system and program a referral, just like a teacher could. So while the teachers got the professional development centered around referrals and communications, not every staff member did. And so there may be some who have answered, and again, I haven't been able to dive deep to know which person responds which way. But I did see correlation in, when I looked at just the teachers that we looked at for the other two questions, whether they responded negatively for attendance or whether they responded negatively for assignments and grades, they also responded negatively for referrals. So that tells me that there is, when we look at the attendance chunk and when we look at the assignments and grades chunk... and when we look at the assignments and grades chunk, there are some folks out there who really need our attention and they need it across the board.
Sure.
And so to Lindsay's point, that's what we need to consider. We need to be doing ongoing professional development to make sure that those who are not comfortable with it can become comfortable with it. But yes, there are other staff members embedded in the discipline referrals, some who may never do a discipline referral.
May never actually do it, but they, okay. That makes a lot of sense. I just wanted to thank you beyond telling us about, you know, devices and replacements and leases. I wanted to thank you for the attention to Tyler SIS. As you explained it to us in the past, far superior product than what we had been using. Should make our educators' lives easier. But obviously, when you implement any large, you know,
There's always some bumps in the new system.
Yeah, there are going to be bumps. And you've got to figure out how to make it work with your specific, you know, way of doing things. Not to mention the human beings who have to actually use it. So I'm glad to see that that kind of attention is being paid to this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. McCarthy.
Thank you for the information. It is excellent. I agree with Mr. Woods. This is exactly the kind of detail we were hoping to see and we've been waiting a long time for you. So thank you for coming tonight and kind of giving us an interview or an overview and kind of reintroducing us to all the things that we need to be keeping our eyes on. It's always a challenge as any board member to feel comfortable analyzing IT, right? We have a lot of trust in our IT people because we simply don't have the level of knowledge or expertise that changes so rapidly. So we have all these sources of information, including our staff, who lets us know how things are going. A couple of thoughts, certainly, oh, and I did also want to thank the presenters for coming tonight. That was excellent information, really helpful to hear those details, so thank you. We know that there are going to be bumps in any system. Many of us were on the board when Power School was introduced after a very lengthy vetting process and training process. And even with that, it was very, yes, it was very bumpy the first year. And so we come to expect that, but what we hope is that there's a pretty rapid response. And I guess that's kind of a support moment. That's what I'm most interested in, is making sure that as we proceed and as we continue to implement, that we have a pretty robust listening system and so that we can respond rapidly to it because we want our staff to have the tools they need to do their work. And of course, you know that because you're a teacher too. One thing, so two things in particular that I've heard about with regards to the transition. One is everybody's panic over the migration of the data and it being inaccurate and people having to resort to manual entry. So one question I have is, some of that going to go away as all of our, like, freshmen this year, all their data is being entered into Tyler? So there's, it should hypothetically be accurate?
Actually, I can answer that pretty clearly for you. So, in that first data point up there, we only brought over the data that we felt the most comfortable with, and that was our current students. Because again, the amount of cleanup that we needed to do in the Power School data was pretty vast. And in order to be ready for online registration, we wanted to make sure that the students we know that are coming in the door, we wanted to make sure we had their data in and their data clean. And so that's where part of the pain came in, is that we didn't anticipate the others yet who were needing to come in. So there was some data, there was some data that wasn't yet clean that we had to go back and get, and so we had to clean it up in the process. So to your point, that will definitely be easier going forward because now we've had the time to bring in the data for other students who might still be coming back to us. The people who have graduated, we've kept that data in.
So I know, I'm guessing that because of the problems with transcripts and GPAs and so forth at the high school level, that probably our counselors have kind of borne quite a bit of the brunt of identifying errors or?
Actually, we've identified a lot of them in IT just by doing comparisons. Like, we'll take batches of data and do comparisons. Some of the transcript concerns that were expressed were less about the new system and more about the transition between the two systems.
Right, right.
Because in Power School, there was a lot more flexibility with how the transcripts were entered. And with Tyler, it's more structured. And so when data from one system comes into another system, it needs that structure. And so that's ultimately where that, where some of those issues arose. As of right now, we can say pretty confidently that the data is calculating correctly on the Tyler SIS transcripts.
Do we have the staffing that we need right now to be able to play that catch-up with all of that?
I think we've mostly played the catch-up. It was a painful period of time. There was some, like, about three, four weeks where our counselors were bearing the brunt of that catch-up.
Okay, and you were hearing directly from them?
Yes.
There was direct communication and encouragement of that, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, and then, of course, all systems have their own particular strengths and weaknesses, right? So I know that one other thing I've heard from high schools is one thing they loved from Power School is the graduation report.
Yes, we've heard that a lot.
Yes, okay.
And that was actually an internally-created system. That was not part of Power School.
I wonder, I guess that probably was the case because it would be different in every school.
Randy Rowe wrote that. And so we're working with Tyler to come up with some strategies that perhaps they can use in all of their districts and hopefully come up with something similar to that so that we have that here.
So that is something you're communicating with Tyler?
David will tell you, I like to communicate with him a lot.
And how about the quality of the training for staff? Is it in a way that's accessible and that it addresses all levels of learning? Some people are going to be able to pick things up more quickly. Other people may need multiple opportunities?
We did our professional development. We did it through, we did Train the Trainer Model, where Tyler trainers came in and trained our Innovation Academy, folks, our technology assistants, and instructional coaches, and library media specialists, all people who are familiar with teaching and who are familiar with having to do differentiated instruction. And so we've armed them as the experts in the building. And when they aren't able to help and solve the problems and training needs, then they reach out to us and we give them the resources they need. In addition to that, embedded in the Tyler SIS itself, when a teacher's logged in and they're looking at things, they have access to all of the help and e-learning tools and things that we used for their training so that they can go back and refresh whatever they need. And as always, we're very comfortable with them, you know, calling our office, entering a track request, and we'll help and support them any way we can.
Very good, okay. And then just one final comment would be, it would be nice to have a board member on the strategic planning.
Actually, we have two.
Do you? I didn't see that on there.
Scott.
Okay, excellent, very good. Thank you for doing that and?
Aren't they your technology committee members?
Yes.
Okay, so that's continuing, board members.
That is correct.
On the technology committee.
That's correct.
Dr. McCarthy, there are two items just to add on to, and first of all, good evening. One, the professional development, as well as when you leave here, you know, some counselors may say, hey, transcripts are still an area of work in progress. You know, do know that, and I believe perhaps Dr. Mickelson had a transcript adjustment update, really just from a parent receiving it, saying, hey, what's the deal with the transcript? Or a counselor getting something, or a student. And as that has happened, one of the items, going back to professional development, I think that particular one was, you know, the user in not clicking the historical grade upload, which led to an adjustment. But that's still a training item that is ongoing. And while we can train on some things, we have attempted training counselors on all things and they certainly liked that and you just can't retain it all. So with that incremental training, I'll ask Ms. Wallace just to share briefly. There are three steps and I've asked them to, you know, really address a variety of ways of training. So you have your Innovation Academy people, you have Mr. Gallin, you have your work tickets, and then there are a couple of other layers that Mr. Gallin and Ms. Wallace have also addressed. Ms. Wallace?
So we have had some late start Fridays where we've had opportunities for teachers to come together and/or to go out to their buildings. We've also started some late-night at Bishop's. So teachers will have the opportunity to come. It's actually the off Thursdays of board meetings. Bishop will be open until seven. And we will offer opportunities for very specific pieces that they want, like small incremental chunks so that they can learn it, become an expert at it, and then come back for another piece of that. And then we've also created several kind of how-to videos so that just really quick little videos on how to integrate or those kinds of things.
Ms. Kirk?
I'm sorry. Thank you. I mean, it was nice to hear that some people are having lots of success with the Power School, wait, Power School, Tyler SIS. What has happened is that as a board member, I don't hear about those.
Yeah, it is good.
None of us do.
I was thinking, man, that's spicy.
That is the first time I've heard anything positive, so.
Everyone has a slice of the negative, aren't they? Who was calling?
Yeah, well, it is.
They definitely owe us too.
Well, I, you know, they would tell me this, I mean, people would stop me and say, "Dude, what happened?" And I had no idea what it meant, what they were talking about. You know, technology is not my strong suit and I know I get, I mean, I can throw my computer out periodically. I get so frustrated trying to get something to work that won't work. So I understand the frustration. But one of the things, so I say, okay, you need to go and talk to somebody. So they promised, I had to promise the whole world that I wouldn't have turned you when they were, because they wouldn't talk to me unless I said, please, I need to know what the problems are. You've got to show me a picture of it. Well, the first thing they showed, it was, there was a particular counselor we were talking about who showed me the transcript that we're using. There are no course numbers on the transcript. There's no indication of where those courses were taken. I mean, it could have come from Kenya for all we know. And that indicated, because I asked, what are all these Ts for? And they looked up, and that means transfers. So all of these Ts, why some of these courses, were transfers from someplace, whether it was a homeschooled child, a place, as I said, somewhere from Kenya. You had no idea where it came from. But the biggest thing for them was not having any course numbers. And then the other thing I looked at, I said, well, it goes on two pages. It was all down one side, nothing on the other side. And I said, what happened to the word columns? Why can't you put a column in there to finish? And it's just a little bit that's left over that could easily be slipped over on the right-hand side of the sheet. So those are things I saw immediately. And so, I mean, I heard from them, then they really got F to me what all the problems were. But the other piece that came up, and some of that stuff I think I've learned from, after I talked with you a bit, that some of that was stuff that they were not, they still hadn't figured something out that they needed to be doing. And they also shared with me, and I talked to five different people about all of this, and they also told me that there were things that they learned that you could do that they hadn't been doing and that they had to be very careful about when they put in certain dates, especially for schedule changes, making sure they have the right dates in there because if they don't, it doesn't fit in the system right. So there were lots of things that they were sharing that they had learned that they now are doing and trying to make sure is done correctly. But the second biggest complaint, and again, I was just, they showed me, and I always, I have a copy here so I don't forget the name of it, the high school credit summary. And that was Tyler SIS' answer to what Randy's put together.
Yeah, progress.
Yes, the progress towards graduation. Well, they printed up, well, and I didn't know who that was, but no course numbers in there at all. But they expanded, they lumped all the educatives together. So we, you know, our chiefs don't all take courses in the sequence that we kind of think is a normal sequence. I mean, just because of their own schedules and the other kind of commitments they have. So you can't tell from that what course, what semester in U.S. history they actually took. So you have to go back to a whole other thing, that you have to walk, go through this whole long list and then figure out which one it is and try to get that in there. But during the electives, it's a real nightmare because they just lump the electives together as if somehow you don't have to know what those are to make sure when you're a really some kid, you don't already put them in a place they've already been. So those are the two things that I heard were the biggest issues that they were coming at me. But there were other things, as I said, many of those things, I think you guys are going to be fixing because you can, they just have to be trained better, they get more training. They just need to know how to manipulate the stuff better. But when I asked the question, you know, I said, well, have you told anybody about this? You know, how did you frustration with this? And how hard it is to work with this? And the anxiety they have, and it's significant, about making errors, particularly on the high school thing, where I have to pick out, find the course that the kid took, of human error. They're so afraid of making an additional error on the kid's plan. And I went away, I said, would you just share this with anybody? And they said, yes. And I said, why, we were in a meeting and we asked about, can we get the transcript fixed so it's not quite so, it looks terrible? And then secondly, it says on two pages, and they're told, no. They were told by Tyler SIS person in the room, no, we're not going to make changes. And that kind of blew me away. That they would tell somebody that, that they were not going to try to adapt it. And they also learned, and this got talking, well, have you not made custom transcripts and programs for other school districts? And they had. When I asked about whether we were going to do it for us, they said, no. So I had a problem with that as a boss.
David?
So I need to know what they're going to say?
So we'll add two items. Mr. Grossman, can you please come to the microphone as well? There was, so two things. One, feedback, and I'll speak first to that. What we've asked is Dr. Klein, who oversees counselors, to get feedback on Tyler. The meeting that perhaps you're referencing had?
I don't know what meeting it was.
Right, but there was a meeting last Friday, the standard counselor meeting. And we've added Tyler SIS as an item for ongoing conversation. Even five months from now, we'll still probably be talking about how are things working and how do we continue to build and get better? To which that meeting, you know, I've seen the notes, as did Ms. Wallace, at that particular meeting at least, there wasn't a Tyler person. But those notes went to Mr. Grossman and Ms. Klein and Mr. Gallin, most of which those items were corrected. But Mr. Grossman can speak to that as well as he's been really daily, pretty much connecting about Tyler and putting staff here. So what we want to see and have seen thus far, and he'll speak to whether or not the no comment, because I want you to leave here feeling really comfortable about a system that is going to be tailored and flexible to what we need. That's our expectation, that's really been our demand. And Mr. Grossman has had the joy of my phone calls on every other day and has been quite attentive and responsive to that. So I'll turn that over to him. So that's the feedback piece on the K&amp;A meeting, so we have those. We have Tyler as one of ours, you all know, items. And I've just asked for them to leave that on every month so we can just be real transparent. What are the issues? Let's address them. And then at the principals' meeting for our high school principals, middle and elementary, they have it as part of their standard communication. We just had principal meeting this week as well. So on that piece of transcript, Ms. Wallace and I have seen the transcript, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Grossman to talk about the capability and whether or not the item of no, in terms of tailoring the transcript accordingly, has occurred. But what we can do is, can you briefly and concisely speak to Mrs. Kirk's question regarding the transcript for counselors? Can it be tailored? And has there been a response of no to our counselors related to transcript, sir? And you may have to speak directly to the microphone in order for Ms. Kirk and all others to hear very well.
Well, first of all, I'll say?
I don't think we can hear you, sir.
First of all, I'll say that it's very impressive that Mr. Gallin's had enough time to make this presentation because of all the time that I've taken up with him in talking through so many of these issues here.
I cannot, I'm sorry.
We still can't hear you, sir. Do you have to speak a little more about that, and for Ms. Kirk, sir?
Yes, we'll be able to make whatever kind of changes are needed on the transcript. So Mr. Gallin and I have been talking quite regularly about changes in the system, any kind of custom changes, any kind of adjustments in configuration, and working through a full range. range of issues. So I believe we've made a lot of progress here in the last couple of weeks, and we've resolved quite a few issues, and I think we'll continue to make progress.
And Mr. Grossman, can you give an example or two, if you could, of the comments from the counselors? So we, again, we'll be quite transparent. And what was fixed since then? And again, you'll have to speak pretty loudly for Ms. Kirk.
You know, I think that a lot of the questions of GPA, of attendance calculations, of the grades and the credits that appear on the report card, a lot of those things are things that we've worked through and have resolved in looking through the data and working with Mr. Gallin's team to fix those.
And those notes particularly, you fixed, those are the ones that you fixed thus far?
Yes.
Really, literally same day? I mean, you know, what are the things, in terms of how you want them to appear on the transcript, for example, the items that were sent forward from that most recent meeting? Our expectation is, within the same week, we want those attended to, because we want people to know, "We hear you, and we're going to adjust accordingly." So we will continue to do that and give you updates.
What I was talking about was the transcript with no course numbers, with no indication of where the courses were taken, the credit sum, your history, credit history summary that they use to, you know, make sure kids are taking the right courses, or they have, we don't get kids in duplicate things that they already taken, neither one, those are the two things that they were told "no" to. And it wasn't just one person that told me that. I had, there were three people in my conversations this week, early part of this week, that said that somebody from Tyler said, "No, we're not going to be fixing that." So, I mean, that's why I got concerned, as the buck stops here kind of thing.
Absolutely.
So, and I needed to hear from you that you have plans to address the problems with the transcript, to make it more usable. And the second thing is definitely to make it more usable for the Kansas, the credit summary. If they're, if you're going to use what Travis designed, that they've been using for years, that's the way it should look. It's got everything there they can see, with course numbers. And I, you know, I can't, we change the names of courses all the time and keep the numbers there, so you've got to know what you're talking about. You've got to know what semester they took this course. But by the course number, not just they took it that semester, was it the first, the very first time, the very first time that class they could take it, or is it the second semester? So I, you know, there's, there are a host of things. Electives have to be able to be easily identified, and they're not easily identified on that. So those are the things I'm talking about. So those are the four of the "no"s came in. And so I'm asking you now, is are you going to be working on that, to try to customize that so it meets our needs? Using Travis's or coming up with your own to make it better for the, to plan the credit, their movement, their direction towards graduation? I just need to know that you're going to do that, and that whoever told these people "no", and they were different professions, that you're going to fix it.
Mr. Grossman, the graduation transcript, or the transcript that Mrs. Kirk is referencing, course numbers, we've seen the transcript, and so, or at least the way it will look at the very end. Can you confirm that course numbers, that to give us the ability to track courses, will be on that transcript?
We can certainly add that. They're not on there right now, but if that's something that's important to the district, we can certainly do that. We're very motivated.
So the answer is yes, sir, is that correct?
And you can also do it on that credit, if you're going to use your system, your high school credit summary, are you going to have, they need them there, probably even more than they do on the transcript, so that they can make sure that they're enrolling the children, the students, in the correct course.
So Ms. Kirk, if I may, the comments from the counselors last Friday, those are items, again, some of which they've corrected, adjusted, some weren't corrections, they were just tailoring. What you've just mentioned is another tailored piece, because there's a custom transcript as well as their traditional transcript. So certainly Tyler has not attended their meetings, but perhaps someone on behalf, or one of our trained people, may have made a comment regarding the way it's currently set up, but certainly Tyler can and will tailor as we needed them to do. So, Mr. Grossman, as he's mentioned, the course codes will be added, and there may be other things as well. So with this piece, if we could bring a transcript to our next meeting to share with you what that looks like, that may be a great next step. As you continue to get feedback and as counselors give that, we will continue to adjust over the course of this semester, but we'll bring a transcript so you get a chance to see that to that meeting and any meeting prior to that.
Yeah, and I, actually, the transcript is just one piece. I think the other, the other is that credit summary, where they have to know what the students have been taking so that they can enroll them in the correct course.
That they will have, yes.
And that's the thing, that they don't have the course numbers on it, and it doesn't allow them to break out electives. It doesn't.
Right. They'll have that, but again, as they have continued over the course of, I mean, we're in four months now, we anticipate, as we conclude for the winter break, you will see continued adjustments and some final items. But many of those items that you're speaking to are captured on those notes, so they addressed GPA attendance and some other things that they wanted to see on there, the transcript.
I did talk about those things. What I talked about was the only thing that they brought up, was big issues.
And so, big issues to those five people, but big issues to all of the counselors, elementary, middle, and high. That list did, the list was long enough so that they got through, at least the same day, that list came Friday, I think it was Friday or either Monday, Friday, and so they got through a number of those things. The other items they will also address. So yes to the course codes in terms of tailoring, as well as yes to the summary, the graduation summary for parents, and then we'll bring that stuff to the next meeting. And if there are ongoing conversations about Tyler through the technology team, we'll make them available as we need to, so you can address that ongoing.
And I think it would be, I don't know who the staff person from Tyler was, who told all these different people "no" about making the changes that they were sharing, to me, were important. So you might want to make sure you talk to your folks to not just say "no", but let's see, to say something like, "We'll see what we can do." That would be something, you know, to say "no" makes you say that they're not listening, and they're not going to fix it. So when I hear that from not just one person, that different people said "no" to the staff about the changes that they thought needed to be made, as the person with the buck stops, our board member, I have a problem with that. So that's why I brought it up. It was more the fact that they weren't being listened to and were being told "no" that I thought was not okay, so.
I trust you to do what you said you're going to do.
I can tell you from our perspective, from the perspective of Tyler Technologies, that we're very motivated to have the district be very happy and comfortable and be a reference for us, a positive reference for us going forward to find business throughout Kansas and other districts of similar size to.
That would love us to be that, because that means it's working well for us.
Right.
So I just felt I really had to bring it up because of the way staff was feeling, is they weren't being heard, and that nothing was going to change. And so they were struggling with something that doesn't work well for them. So I think that's important, to hear you say, "You're going to take care of it," and hopefully before the end of the year, before I sign them.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
And the issues that have been addressed to us by teachers have been thoroughly addressed, so I appreciate the perspectives that you gave, and I definitely appreciate this whole presentation. I think the question that comes up for me, because I'm listening to the discussion and thinking about how many of us can come up with different perspectives on these, what is the control mechanism? Where is the place where it's reported to? But then also, where's the place where we can say, "This is what we agree upon as a district, not just one building, but as a district, these are the things that we want, and this is how we want them to look across the district"? What is that reporting process?
So for individual needs, the reporting mechanism would be our technology tracking system, but for systemic needs, the reporting mechanism should be through the leadership team, because the leadership team ultimately would be making decisions as far, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but ultimately would be making decisions as far as what should be the case for all the schools with the input from the schools.
And, you know, the technology committee, which, you know, early on, really hadn't fully started meeting until the last month, I think they came together, now that Tyler is pretty much in place, and so, you know, really bringing a lot of these things, like the transcripts, to say, "Here's what we now have, here's what the final piece will look like." That will flow through that group as well. So as we get feedback, leadership team will make some decisions district-wide, and then we'll use that technology committee as our kind of vetting process. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
I just wondered if that's a A disconnect, because we know what we expect to see based off a previous program, but then we have to know what we're going to see based off this program. And there has to be, there has to be some kind of agreement around that, so that when we see that, you don't feel like it's broken, you know something has changed. Something else you mentioned earlier, and that was just one of the slides, and you talked about how we're going to sustain our placement of computers, yeah? How we're going to sustain. What are the additional benefits we give from the leasing perspective?
Primary benefit is a really good knowledge of where you're going to be from one year to the next. With the different life cycles of different devices, and that's kind of what you see in these peaks and valleys, sometimes you'll get a four-year device coinciding with a five-year device, and that can be pretty hard on a capital budget. And so, the biggest benefit is leveling out and having predictability in capital expenditures going forward. Another positive that we've seen in the districts that I used to work with that did leases is they were able to buy homogeneous devices, and they were able to say, "Okay, all of these devices are going to do this as our baseline." What we experience right now is we have different classes of devices, and within that class of device, we might have seven or eight different models, which makes predicting the ways that each individual model might interact with software very, very difficult. And, you know, we do experience that from time to time, where a software will work great on this computer, and then I go over to this computer, which is exactly, they're both laptops, and it's completely different. And so by making a homogeneous situation, we can better prepare, better plan, and swap out devices a little bit more regularly than we're able to right now.
And what about tech support that goes along with that, is that?
Well, and that's ultimately the same piece of it. You know, if we have homogeneous devices, we're able to, our team knows this device really, really well, because they're not splitting that knowledge on eight different devices that look similar.
One other thing about the, so you did a slide on the yellow, green, and red, and just real quickly, I was wanting to know, when it's green, is that saying that we created a workaround that everybody agrees upon, or are we saying that it's actually quote-unquote fixed?
On all of those greens, it's pretty, it's pretty certainly fixed. I would say 95%. There are always going to be individual student issues or individual data pieces that still need to be cleaned up, but these are things that, you know, when they were presented to us, we didn't have any rhyme or reason as to what they were, and we discerned a pattern, and we found the rhyme, we found the reason, and then we solved those problems. But again, I'll take the attendance one down at the bottom as an example. We kept that one yellow, because even though we have solved what was the broader picture with the part-time students, we still find some anomalies. There's still some part-time students out there that aren't quite doing attendance-wise what we expect them to do, and so we're still working through those on a regular basis. So if there's enough for me to have left it yellow, that means that I'm still looking at it.
Okay.
And quite frankly, these things that are green, that doesn't mean we don't go back and review and make sure that that was the right solution.
Excellent, excellent. And so, this is one more last question, is this a cloud-based installation as well, so that what, or centralized, so that was this fixed in this model? It's not like we're installing a building-by-building base.
Oh, no, no, no. It's not cloud-based, it's something that we hold, we hold the servers that hold our data, and so it's not cloud-based, but it is accessible for our teachers and students outside.
And so all changes made there are made for everyone?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, going further to action items, the first thing we'll do, since our people from the city are here, is the TIF district request that we talked about. We've had three total meetings with this group of gentlemen and their, and the places they represent, and they've come up with an action that we all like, and Nancy, I think, is going to.
Well, I'm going to move that we support, have a, pass a resolution, or just vote here this evening to, I said, to support the TIF district as it's being presented to us. And if we get a second on that, we'll have a discussion about what has changed and why we are making that recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, so we're ready for discussion.
Well, we had three meetings, and I do not have my phone. Have you got the most recent? Do we have, we have your most recent resolution, the fix that you were going to do for us? You had, you had, we put some more language in yesterday. That one is what I don't have.
Good evening, Board, Doug Gerber, Deputy City Manager, here with.
You have to speak up, because I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Good evening, Doug Gerber, Deputy City Manager, here with Vince Frye from DTI. As Ms. Kirk references, we have had a number of positive discussions, and we did come up with some language that we think mutually benefits all the parties, and the language generally says, I don't have it in front of me, but it generally says that at the conclusion of the district, okay.
I've got it now, too. Yeah, we've all, we've all got it.
At the conclusion of the district, if there are funds remaining, the city agrees to sit down with the school district and talk about a mutually beneficial project on which those funds could be used within the TIF district.
And I can read the exact thing to you, I found it in my phone now, too, but it's essentially what you said there, that one of the things that we struggled with was the impact, to pick public schools, potential impact. Some of the things that we need to keep in mind is that this is a 20-year project, these are huge projects, it would not be able to happen without this kind of support. It will go on until I'm not around anymore. I'm not going to make it another 20 years, I'm sure. And the important thing is that it will have a long-term benefit for us, I believe. The other important thing is that the property taxes that are currently coming out of that TIF district, we will continue to get at that level so that we don't lose, we don't lose any more property tax, which is one of the problems we have with some of the other districts, tax abatement districts that we have in the city. So I think that's probably why we all kind of sat around and talked about and agreed that it was, this was probably the right thing to do. I think we appreciate the fact that you came up with language that makes sure that when their project is over with and there are remaining funds, that's pick public schools, we're part of the group that sits down to decide what's going to happen with those funds, whether it'll go into another project in the TIF district that will benefit hopefully our children, too, or whether it be redistributed to the taxing entities that gave up their tax revenue during that period of time. So I think that's a good thing for us, and Patrick, you have a few things you want to add to it, too?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Ms. Kirk, and thank you, Mr. President. I want to, of course, just reiterate a couple of things that you heard, a couple of the parts, why I like this deal, why I think we came up with something really good. But before I do that, I think it is probably, I get the privilege really now of giving credit where credit is due. I like this idea, and I'll explain exactly why in just a couple moments, but I think I really do owe, and we all owe, a debt of gratitude to the two parties who principally were responsible for us reaching this point. And I would say, first of all, to Ms. Kirk, thank you very much for highlighting this issue, for elevating it, bringing it to our attention, for getting the board to focus on it, for engaging our administration and helping us understand what the impact was and what it meant. That's something that we probably wouldn't, or I guess I speak for my own feeble brain, probably wouldn't have done otherwise. I want to also give a ton of thanks, and they're not here, or Curtis isn't here, but I want to give a ton of thanks to Curtis Sneedon from the Greater Topeka Partnership, to Vince Frye from Downtown Topeka Inc., and to the city, and Doug is representing them, Doug Gerber. to the city. And Doug is representing them, Doug Gerber. We, they, they actually really, in my mind, made an incredible good faith effort to meet with us, to make sure that we understood their purpose, that they were truly interested in seeing what's at best for development within our district. And went to length so far that when this thing was on the city council agenda, and we hadn't had the opportunity to fully consult with them, they pulled it off. So we can have this conversation. So over the three conversations that we had, just as Ms. Kirk alluded to, and she actually read the language to you, basically, you know, as Curtis had his brilliantly, brilliantly simple slide last time that explained to us how this TIF works. You establish the district, you take an assessment of property taxes at that moment, you, as property taxes increase, you actually collect the incremental increase of those funds. They go into a special fund, an escrow pretty much that the city holds. And the city then works with property developers who come up with developments within that TIF district. And they negotiate on how much, you know, which funds and which expenses they're going to reimburse those developers for. So it is often the case that they are able to conclude their development before the 20-year statutory, you know, cap that's on top of, of TIF projects. And often the case that there are funds left. That's not a guarantee. But when there are funds left, basically the language that, that we just said, and did you actually read it? I've got it. I'll read it.
I guess I can.
So basically, says that, yeah, we end up in the driver's seat, along with the city on deciding what is done with those final funds. So what you could end up seeing, you know, in a, imagine a TIF district, I'm going to use the one on 29th and Fairland, for example, just because I drive by every day on my way to work. Imagine that district, it's got several restaurants in it, it's got a movie theater, there's going to be a hotel coming. All of the large infrastructural projects that are going on that are eligible to be reimbursed, the expenses for those developments. Imagine that they end up with, I don't know, you know, $50, $50, that's probably an astronomical number, but we get a developer or somebody like that who comes along and wants to put a children's museum. Or what comes to mind, because I visited this year, and I saw a plaque, and I visited actually just like a month ago, and I saw a plaque on their wall that they actually financed this in part with some, some development tool from a city similar to this, the children's museum, or, and the city museum in St. Louis, which is awesome, I absolutely love, I think, you know, a big man. But if we get ended up with something like that, and now the school district itself is in the, in the driver's seat of deciding what happens. So upon payment of all the redevelopment project costs, any tax increment remaining in the special fund established pursuant to KSA 121775 and amendments thereto shall be used to pay the cost of a project within the redevelopment district approved by the governing body, meaning the city, the Board of Commissioners of Shawnee County, and USD 501, Board of Education. That's really only three entities who are sitting around a table making a decision about what to do with the additional funds. Now, I'll be honest with you and tell you that the earliest you're probably talking about new development is 10 years, you know, like, could be 20. But even at that, I think that's a really positive step. I see it as something that could end up being a model for municipalities around the nation to collaborate and cooperate with school districts. Imagine if we had already been thinking this way back when we were, you know, planning our bond initiative of 2014. Think about some of the things that we could have thought about, that we want to try to make sure and attract those kinds of developers to, to propose projects in our district, in the, in the TIF district, I should say. That actually is Vince's job. So he'll get the job of making sure he can bring the developers from City Museum of St. Louis to Topeka. That's what I want, just so you know. But with that, I really just wanted to give credit where credit is due and say that this, I think, compromise is, in my opinion, is very brilliant. It's a result of the hard work of principally those two parties. Dr. Morrison and I got to be in the room. But I urge you guys, where I think it's a good compromise. It makes me feel a whole lot better about, you know, foregoing what could be tax revenue, which honestly, we probably wouldn't have otherwise, so.
Just, just to add another piece to what came out of our meetings, and I think is incredibly important for the next board and the boards in the future, is that Curtis Sneedon with Chamber would talk to us about making sure that Topeka Public Schools has someone on their committees now, starting this January. I'm not sure which, whether it would be Downtown Topeka or Chamber, whatever, you guys attempt to tell us that. But, so we thought that was important, so that a board member is a part of that. And we welcome the opportunity to, to work with the city fathers and the chamber to make our downtown a better place.
Dr. Mickles.
I may be in the minority here, and I'm appreciative of the work that my colleagues on the Board have done to reach a compromise that seems fair and equitable. And certainly appreciate the work of people from downtown in the city that have worked to develop our city. But I'm philosophically opposed to taxpayers paying for development of somebody's business rather than the developer. And I may be too simple to understand the whole complexity of the TIF, but it seems that the person who takes the risk for that development should be the developer and the taxpayers. And so I'm going to vote no for this.
We appreciate your, your position. I mean, that's kind of where I was when this got started, and then I head got turned. But one of the things that we did learn, though, I think from this process, is that it's the neighborhood revitalization projects and IRBs that are really hurting us. And that we also learned that we have, we could have, had we known, opt out for being included in the neighborhood revitalization project. We'll have, it gets renewed every three years, and what happened was they just came in and asked us if they would just let them renew it without us understanding what was going to be hitting us. And to lose $1.7 million over 10 years is a big chunk of change for us, no question about it. But that's certainly a big, much bigger hit to us in the immediate future than the TIF would be. So for our next board, and Mr. Robbins is clearly aware of, of this little issue, the next time this comes out for renewal, we're going to have, it will affect that $1.7 million that comes out every year for 10 years. But it'll, it'll protect us from any new ones if we opt out. So we can do that.
So Ms. Kirk, the one thing that gives me pause about voting no is your acceptance of this compromise. If they can sway...
You know, it was hard.
I think, what am I doing wrong here if they persuade you that way? And that's, you know, out of respect for you and your understanding of this process, and your commitment to our district, I question my own judgment here a little bit.
Well, I mean, I, trust me, I understand where you're coming from. We all share some of that concern. I think what I, what I learned through this process is that the distinction really, so with your tax increment financing program, you're talking large infrastructural investments, you aren't talking any of the smaller things, and they draw the district broad, and it ends up being a cost-sharing mechanism, basically, with only the increments paying for...
The incremental spending.
Yeah, for development. So you, so you draw this thing in a district where, you know, it may be largely a commercial district that you've drawn this thing for. So the commercial property in the rest of the district ends up, the incremental value ends up helping to pay for the development of new commercial property. So the things that, in my opinion, are probably a little bit more damaging, we talk about the neighborhood revitalization project, which can actually hit residential. We talk about tons of projects, and it's not large, you know, infrastructural things, we're talking, yeah, that's, that's, that's the one that we probably ought to pay a whole lot more attention to, and we have a whole lot less control over that one. This one, because they're actually collecting funds, and they are then negotiating with developers for what expenses they're going to reimburse them for. The city, and then, and now, once we get to the, you know, the excess, the school district, along with, are really in the driver's seat determining what gets reimbursed. I, so I, I was with you, I have to say.
I sort of hope I'm in the minority, but I still...
It's okay.
Philosophically, I'm opposed to the, the principle, I understand the, I mean, I didn't understand it at all until Mr. Steen came and spoke. But I hope in 10 or 20 years, there's money to be shared with people who are paying for this improvement. Philosophically, I'm opposed to the concept.
I appreciate that.
Okay. I guess I would disagree with Scott. I mean, you have a downtown that virtually was falling apart. You need to incentivize people coming into downtown to build new things so you can increase tax structure. So I totally agree with Vince Frye on it. So I think it's time that we vote and then for the resolution. So probably, we will have to, yeah, I think we will have to vote for hand. So all, all in favor of the resolution as stated, raise your hand. And all opposed.
May I ask for a copy of what you read?
Yes.
Can I have a minute?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
I actually have it on my phone. I'll, I'll just forward it to you.
Okay.
I just got it, so I can share it. That is for the resolution.
Yeah, well, we'll get you exactly what's intended should be.
It was just a simple motion that we support, that we support the TIF for Downtown Topeka. It can be just that simple.
And that's what I have, but I would like the word...
Oh, yeah. We've got it in our phones, and we'll send it to you. Yeah.
So next on the action item is the major maintenance plan, which we, thank you, guys, which we had previewed last meeting. So I'll take a motion to accept the major maintenance plan.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to accept the major maintenance plan. Is there any further discussion about it? Okay, now we're ready to vote. The last action item is the One United Voice Platform that we discussed last time. Would you like to say something, Dr.?
Not much. Just that there were two additions from other board members, which we would support as well. One, I believe one of the board members in another district asked about the restoration of funding for CTE credentials earned by high school students, which we support. And we would ask that administration supports, we'd ask for the board to agree to having us add that. Then adding language endorsing the state Board of Education's autonomy to set policy on bullying. Again, those board members know that if these are not agreeable, then it'll stand as you all have already discussed. If that's agreeable, however, we don't have an issue with that language.
What's...
Our high density that we wanted, that they weren't necessarily initially adding it, they, they agreed to that. And the language that we proposed, that we sure we wanted as well.
Was this their wording on this? Is this their revision? They do that, or we do that?
Mrs. Lister, this is the most updated wording. Is this correct?
From them. So can we ask them to correct their spelling?
This is from Shawnee Heights, so we will, Ms. Lister will edit it, return it, and ask for corrections to be made appropriately. Have you edited it all, Ms. Lister, for that district? Okay, so Ms. Lister will edit it for them?
Look at the final under the school funding piece. Look at that final sentence that they added in. I don't even know what that says.
We will...
And credential, what, what is that?
We will definitely ask for Ms. Lister to edit that.
Thank you.
With noted that our board members saw those items. We'll also make a request for us to take that on, as we previously did in past years. And I know the last, this year and last year is another district, so our apologies for not catching that for them.
So we just want to acknowledge that Dr. McCarthy was a national spelling bee champion. Truthfully, she was. Before, before it was put on ESPN like it is now, she was spelling bee, a national champion. We're grateful that you double-checked for all of us.
Are the additions satisfactory? So we'd just like for your approval?
So do you have a motion to accept?
I'm moved that we accept the United Voice Platform ask for...
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion about this? Okay, we're ready to vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we have one discussion item about proposed course changes.
Okay. So attached is the course, proposed course changes for 2020, 2021, that would go into the new program of studies in January for kids to enroll in. Many of the courses are CTE courses. An educational trainer adds an application-level course, and then the rest of the courses on that page are around the animal science pathway. One addition I would add that is not noted on here is that animal science and advanced animal science would be counted as a core science class for students.
Which one?
Animal science and advanced animal science would, would count as a core science.
Second one.
The very last class on that page, enjoyment for music, was a request from Topeka High to have a fine arts elective that could be concurrent credit with Washburn University. And so we've met, they've agreed, and so that enjoyment for music would be a concurrent credit offering. The change to human body systems is just to simply offer it as a core science credit. And then the last two changes are really, one, for college algebra, is to change our course description, so it's aligned with Washburn University. And then probability and statistics is to change the requisites to make it more accessible to students.
Do we, do we know, do students express an interest in the animal science curriculum? And do we do surveys? How do we know that, you know?
I think there's been anecdotal conversation and questions, as they've, and they've had a lot of students coming through and touring at CTE, and they've talked about the possible opportunities for next year, and that has been one that...
For that curriculum, but I just wanted to know, how do we, so we're shooting darts in the dark and hoping we hit something, as opposed to a focused, we've got a quarter number of students who might be interested in...
One of the things you should note, some of our students are actually completing shadow and internship experiences, but we don't have courses that match it, but they are at various veterinarian places, in animal-related places, just as part of their piece. Dr. Morrell was here. I did tell him that he could go ahead and transition on out to give us more information on that.
But they are at various veterinary places and animal-related places, just as part of their piece. Dr. Morrell was here. I did tell him that he could go ahead and transition out to give us more information on that. The nice thing is with having all of these courses approved, such as even energy, which we don't actually offer right now, by having them approved, they're at least approved so that as we have students that request that, if the class doesn't make, make would be about 15 students. If they don't sign up and they don't express interest, we know that you've said, okay, you approve it, but we don't necessarily have to offer it next semester. But we do know that we have at least a class full of students that are either interning, shadowing, or have had some level of interest.
Ms. Rizley reported back to me today. I helped her set one of her college kids up with a veterinary student externship. And she's, or veterinary clinic externship. And she's gone twice. Went today and came back thrilled. It's Lily, who was-
Thank you.
Convocation breakfast, or the foundation breakfast, I think you had. She's thrilled with her experience so far. So I'm hopeful this is successful. I just want to make sure we've got the critical mass of interest to make.
One adjustment that has been discussed is potentially changing the name of exploratory agriculture because that's the introductory first course. And that that might, students might not clearly understand the pathway and what's involved in that class.
That'd be good.
Right.
I have a question, too. You have probability and statistics. But I don't understand, is this change from function, tree, or precal to, as for to or on this?
So it's, it's changing the prerequisites?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, it's changing the prerequisites currently.
Okay, yeah, because I couldn't, I couldn't, I began to think that's what you were trying to say. So you could take out these, you're going to change it, change the precal out. Okay, I got it.
Okay.
Because it didn't, there's a word left out. You change the prerequisite. It doesn't say that, so. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now you see why I suggested we need to have course numbers? Because we changed the name? So I could go to make sure they don't take this up for us again? You gotta have the number.
So any further discussion about this? This will come back as an action item? Okay.
Those are interesting changes.
Dr. Mickelson, we're ready for comments. Do you have any comments? Ms. Johnson? Dr. McCarthy? Mr. Woods?
No.
I'm, I'm sorry. The policy commit just a couple things. Good, good news, I'm a good news lady here. Wait a minute, I'm the good news person. One of the things, we've already signed 21 letters of intent to hire from our student teachers that we have here. And the comment from Dr. New today was, who's that? That's her? Good, strong group of new prospective teachers. And I shouldn't have said that for, I mean, she was really excited about these people. We only have, we have eight unlicensed folks right now, but all of them are in the process of getting things taken care of. We have one person that if they aren't able to get it taken care of, and it doesn't look like they will be able to, effectively end of the semester, they will not have, they will be not teaching here. So just to let you know, we're sticking to our plans. You gotta have that license, so we're not going to have you onboard. So, but, no, anyway, most of this is really, really good stuff. Good news.
Okay. I'll pass on the comments, too. So I'm ready to take a motion to recess to executive session. And we need about a half hour.
Yeah.
Mr. President, I move the board recess to executive session to discuss individual employee contracts and performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel resumption under coma. And we will, we'll take about a five-minute break and then go from there. So we'll start at nine, four, 3540, and get through at what? 10:15, 10:20? A dreamer. Huh? A cerebrum. 10:20? We'll just have to.
So motion? Do we have, somebody second? Motion and second, any further discussion? Okay, we're ready to vote.
I put a break and make it.